...them momentarily.
Okay.
Are you guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the April 5th regular meeting of the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education. As always, our first agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So join me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
For the benefit of those not in the room, we are going to adjourn to executive session now. I'm going to ask for a motion for that and then we'll be back presently. So moved.
Second.
And that's probably just... Let me read the... Actually, "Resolvent Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District adjourns to executive session to discuss the personnel matter." So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No objections, no nays. Thank you. All right, we'll be back presently after this.
That's a point.
That's best. Reconvening requires a motion, right?
Yes.
All right. Resolvent Board of Education... I'm sorry, are you guys ready?
Yeah.
Resolvent Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District reconvenes our executive session to begin its regular meeting, its regular April 5th meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No objections, no nays. Welcome back. Okay. We have a first order of business. Ms. Hutter and Ms. Mitchell are going to give us a latest update on the budget, which we will, just so you know, place before the board for a vote in the... during the action items portion of the meeting later this evening.
Okay.
Correct, yeah?
Correct. So good evening, everybody. Welcome, Garrison. We are at a point where we're presenting most of our... all of our findings and with a budget we think is fiscally responsible and also supports the many programs and personnel that we have in our district. So, welcome.
Laura, let me just suggest something. There are a number of slides here at the very beginning which we have all seen before and I don't think necessarily change. So, there's no need to talk through those.
Okay.
The priorities, the process, and all we have already covered.
You want to get to the numbers?
Please.
Okay. Sue, let's get to the numbers. Okay. All right.
We did this.
We did.
Didn't we, Ann?
Did you get this? Can I go now? All right, so there is a change in the proposed budget and I just want to bring it to your attention. We met with Special Ed this week and there is a potential of an outside placement, so we felt it prudent to add that to the budget. So that's a $95,000 increase from the last time we presented, so the new budget total for the '17-'18 year would be $10,005,758.39.
So that's the nine... That $575 represents the $90K addition, correct?
Yes. Yes. And so, the revenue side, this is basically just showing you the two-year history of budgets in the last column to show you where the money's coming from at this point. With that $95,000 increase, I increased what we're planning to take out of reserves at this point. We're still waiting to state aid numbers. That could change. I don't know, see that that will be $95,000. Probably be a very small change. And our tax levy would remain the same. So we would stay under the cap.
So it looks like the bottom line is repeated for '16, '17, '17, '18.
Okay, I changed that. I thought I changed it and I guess it didn't update. But last year was $10...
It was on the first slide, I think.
Yeah. $10 million. So it's...
I'll tell you, last year was $10,291.
Yeah, I know I changed that. I probably just didn't save the file before I put it on the thing. I'm sorry.
Happens.
Make sure the one we voted on is good and right on the... That's all.
Yep. Well, we're voting on the '17-'18 budget.
Our last issue's in... Never mind. Right, yeah.
Yep, '17-'18 budget. So just to summarize, like, what does that look like for the taxpayers in Garrison? It would be for Phillips Town a .34 per thousand increase and for Putt Valley a 16 cent per thousand increase on their taxes. So for a $700,000 assessed home, in Phillips Town, the equalization rate would bring us $325,500 at 1.71 percent and Putt Valley at $700,000. So that... we would take that $16,000 times by thou... The 16 cents times it by $700,000 and drive by a thousand to find out what your increase would be for your own particular home. If the budget fails, the proposed budget would have to be decreased by $149,000 because that would bring us back down to the tax levy of this current year, which we've gone over before. This is new. We spoke about this in the facilities meeting, suggesting that we do a proposition two this year to refinance the capital reserve fund. A few of you on board, 10 years ago when the board approved and the voters approved a capital reserve fund, it was put through to work on roofs, your windows, boilers, shed, paving, all those were... Lot of work we did. It has a 10-year life, which is expiring now in June. There's $216,000, a little bit more than that, in that fund right now. The proposition would allow the district to reestablish that capital reserve, to help offset costs for future capital projects.
What was the original balance in the fund? It was $215 remaining now. What do we know what the original balance was?
The original amount that was put in there was about $528,000. There was some cost offset with ransom we got for the shed, if you recall. It was about $90,000. There was also Excel funds that helped pay for the roof. So we were able to really extend that for 10 years and get a lot of work done, which was nice.
Sue, can I... I'm sorry, is it going to be another 10-year?
Yes. So if the voters approve it, the fund would have a 10-year life. The proposition that I would put before the board next week to vote... next board meeting to vote on would allow you to be able to put funds in at the end of each year. I hope you might approve money to go into whatever our reserves. You could approve money to go into up to a million dollars. There would be no additional taxes for this proposition and the proposition, if it's not approved by the voters, would have to go... money would have to go back into the general fund, the $216,000. Or we could, when I say we could, the board could earmark it to pay off district debt. That would be up to the board. So again, if anybody has any questions on that.
So it just essentially preserving the fund gives us the flexibility to have money in the...
Well, with the capital reserve fund, voters have to vote it to establish it. Voters have to vote it in and voters also have to vote money down. So you can't spend that money unless voters evote the project. So we don't have a particular capital project right now, but if that $216 was earmarked for the capital reserve fund and the boiler went and we could put up a proposition to fix the boiler or it could go towards...
So $216 would really just roll over into a new fund?
Yes.
And then each year we could decide, the voters would agree or disagree, to add money or subtract money from that as well?
Well, the board can decide to... with this proposition, they... you're already asking voters to approve up to a million dollars. So the board would have the authority to put in up to a million into it.
Over the 10-year lifespan.
Over the 10-year lifespan. You can't expend those funds unless you put it up to the voters again. So my thoughts are, because we're on the heels of possibly doing another capital project, if we have a capital reserve fund, when we go out to vote, these funds would help keep tax rates stable, maybe when there's a year or two before the bond that we're paying for now falls off. And I explained that to the board members in the facilities planning, so we went over charts and that. So I think it's a good way to go. If you... if we don't put it up for proposition, it goes into the general fund. If it's voted down, it goes into the general fund and then you basically lose your power on what you can do with that money.
Right. So we are basically hazarding the chance that we get an approval from the voters to essentially roll over into a new capital reserve fund, the existing balance that's in the expiring fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sue, can I just... I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it rolls into the general fund, there is... it can affect future budgets because what winds up happening is, if I remember the calculations correctly, the debt and all calculates into our... And I think that's important for the voters to understand.
Basically, it could go to offset taxes in a one-time shot deal. It wouldn't be for this budget that we're voting on today, it would be next year. Or we'd go to pay off debt next year in the next year's budget. Which would be, again, a one-time shot deal, so it's...
So...
But it affects the calculation also as far as how much you can go up from year to year and I think that's important for voters to understand.
It affects the tax levy, yes.
Right. It affects that tax cap. So if this does go down and it affects the tax cap, I think things were tight this year. It's going to affect it probably even more next year. So that's important for voters to understand.
You mean if...
Can we try to explain that?
If we reduce our budget by using this, it affects our ability to raise revenue later? In future budgets?
It affects... like, if we were to use it to pay down the debt, that's one of the calculations in the tax levy. So if you reduce it, it's giving you... it's giving you a narrower window...
Right. I get it.
To have that levy.
I get it.
And it's tight to begin with. So I think that's important for the voters to understand that if it does go down, that we could be looking at more problems in that levy going forward.
Yeah, and the tax levy cap, I mean, I do not want to bring the tax... You're absolutely right, but it really depends on what you put into that calculation.
Correct.
So you could, you know...
I know debt. I remember debt, right. I remember debt being one of them.
Yes, but debt is definitely part of it. So if it went down and we're paying off debt, we probably maybe would, you know, offset it by not having some capital projects worked on and that type of thing.
Can I get a little... Sorry, go ahead.
And we can't. If we don't have this fund, we can't keep it as unallocated funds and potentially use it for capital projects because we're limited to 4% of the unallocated.
The law is very specific on lowering taxes or paying off current debt. So it's very specific on what you can do with this money.
And in any event, we are already at 4% of the general fund. So there's been... There's nowhere to put it exactly, other than pay up debt or to credit it back to the taxpayer. But let me just be clear on something because this did not come up in any of our conversations that we've had in preparation tonight. If we roll this fund over, any expenditures out of that fund have to be approved by the voters? Did I understand? Is that the way?
Yes, because the way the original proposition was set up, when I say the original proposition, the proposition that was 10 years ago.
The 2007, right.
The original proposition. That proposition was written to not only approve the capital reserve, but to expend funds.
Right.
So it was basically all encompassing. I wouldn't suggest to go forward with that because unless you're very specific on what you're going to spend that money on, you're going to have a hard time at SED getting the...
Well, and also, it doesn't really work if the roof leaks and needs to be fixed mid-year. You can't call a special vote, right?
Yeah, exactly.
This is a little... That's kind of what I'm asking. How would that work? You... we roll this over, we have a $216,000 balance in this new fund and we have a roof leak in the middle of the year. Do we have to wait? Do we have to call a special vote of the... Special vote of the voters?
Yeah. That would be, to me, an emergency. You would fix the roof and then...
And then subsequent and approve it retroactively. Okay.
You fix it out of an allocated fund and then wait for the budget to transfer.
But I guess probably, you know, in my mind, because we're on the heels of a major capital project when that vote goes through, to actually put that... these funds up to vote, if it's in the capital reserve fund, if the voters approve it now to go into the capital reserve fund. Yes?
No, no, no. I...
Do you have a question?
No, no, no. I would only caution all of us that we are still very early in the game with respect to this major capital project that is by no means foregone conclusion. So I just...
And that's the beauty of putting it in this fund as well because we... I mean, worst-case scenario, we go two years out and see that this capital project is fizzling up. It's, you know, losing momentum for whatever reason. At least you could want to vote for a small capital project that would actually just spend those $216,000, whatever that cap project would be.
Okay. And the draft language that you have in the resolution of the proposition says you're authorizing the establishment of the fund to be funded up to $1 million? Is the $1 million number in that, in the draft of the proposition or...
Yes. And I... I mean, since we're discussing it tonight, if the board felt it should be more or less...
No, I just...
That could be changed. But that was... I thought that was reasonable in my mind. When I was thinking about going forward with this possible capital project, I don't see us saving much more than that in the next few years and I thought that was a reasonable amount. It actually gives us a nice, nice start for our capital projects.
The only reason I raise it is that nobody, no, not 1 in 100 voters is going to discuss this issue with a level of detail and sophistication with which you're sharing it with us and we're asking you about it. And if they see the school's going to set up a million-dollar fund, it's going to raise questions.
Yeah.
That will be... anyway, it... optically, it will be a challenge, I think, to get the level of votes that may be completed.
And it's good to hear that because I know Laura and I will be working on communications, especially to put it in occurrence and get that communication out to voters. So to hear, you know, the concerns that you're bringing up and to actually have that information in that and be able to explain it to people because sometimes I get lost in financial world and I think everybody understands it.
Yeah, you got to simple it down. Dumb it down, Susan.
No, 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 no. I wouldn't say that, but it's just sometimes I'm thinking, I understand it, everybody understands. Well, so it's a difficult... it is a difficult... This is probably one of the most difficult reserves to understand, the reserve fund. It goes into a separate place. It's one of the few that actually has to be voted in, voted out. But I think it was important to have it in the first place. It did help us get some rights that was done in this school and I think if we can continue it, it's better than just having the money pay off debt in one year.
Okay, so as long as we all understand what we're... what the issue is. The resolution said we will vote on the language of the proposition itself at our next meeting. Correct? Yeah, yes, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll have the actual language. But I wanted to... we agreed it would not be a good idea to put the language of the proposition in front of the board without having the opportunity for all of you to understand what we're... what's being proposed here, what the alternatives are, what the consequences, what no vote might be and ask you at the same time or in the same meeting to approve the language itself. So we'll take that up on our next meeting. Unless there are any more questions on what it's... we're all talking about here.
The only comment, Nick, if anyone's watching the video, is just to say I think the simplifying way to look at this is, in the same way as a homeowner, you might set aside some money for repairs that were needed or improvement projects were needed. And should you, you know, come upon that situation, this is a fiscally prudent move that gets the school a reserve fund for the same kind of thing on a larger scale.
Well done.
Yeah.
Now, if anybody's watching. All right.
And then...
Somebody get that down.
Yeah. Play that back.
Again, just to remind you...
May 16.
May 16. Out there, vote.
Excellent.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
Come.
Superintendent Lawrence, then John Mitchell Lawrence.
Good evening again. Just a few highlights that are going on, a few of many that are going on in the district. But I wanted to give a shout-out to the PTA and their Here and Now lecture series. They had a couple of them already and they've been very successful, mostly geared towards middle school students and their parents. Last Friday, on March 24th, we had John Cronin, who's a senior fellow environmental affairs at Pace University and co-founder of Riverkeeper. He spoke about the history of commercial fishing on the Hudson River and he also spoke a lot about how we, as individuals and as a community, can create change in our own backyard. So he had some really good messages for our students as well as the adults in the room. It was narrative. He used photos. He used his own experience. He used history. It was just a nice way to make the Hudson River and the things that are going on on it and in it in a very accessible way to both students and the adults. So I encourage you to go to the next one, which is on April 21st, and that's Nikki Sizemore. And she's the owner and chef of From Scratch Fest and the author of Food Processor Family Cookbook. So that's April 21st. And we'll post that around and hopefully we'll see more people there, more kids, more adults, especially from around the community. I wanted to give Barbara Delesio, one of our TAs, a shout-out. She's been accepted as a provisional Phillips Town Garden Club member. We're excited to have somebody in-house helping with the gardens and the courtyards around the building. She's also working with students in planting flowers and vegetables around the estate here. So we're happy to have her at the garden club. Also, there was a great fundraiser last week. It was the eighth grade fundraiser where Kathy Clark and Barbara Delesio, both TAs, they're the co-advisors of the eighth grade team, co-leaders of the eighth grade team. And they're... they raised $1,255,000. They had a basketball game. They had ice cream. They had a homemade spaghetti dinner. Were you there, James?
No, no. Go for it.
And a raffle. And then they're also getting some funds for the rubber duck run, which I hear is going to be these little rubber ducks that are going over the falls near Walter Hoving home on a Saturday soon. So we'll have more information about that, but it has been gaining momentum and excitement, so...
It's going to be an environmentally friendly activity, isn't it?
Oh, they'll collect all the ducks?
We will collect them all, yes.
Right at the right end of this page. $5 a duck. I don't know what the... Is it a 50-50? If your duck wins, you get half the pool or what's the...
I don't know. I'm not sure what the pools are, but I'll find out for you.
A little sign of $5 a duck.
But there's a buzz. There's a buzz and it's a new idea, so we'll see what happens.
No kids falling in the stream?
No, we hope not.
Okay.
We... just to talk about, we had our ELA state testing. We had a few opt-outs. Are about 29% school-wide, 29% in elementary as well as in middle school. I do not... I have not heard from the state, and maybe Sue has, of sort of what's going to happen if you don't meet AYP.
I've got that in mind.
Oh, you do? Okay, great. I have the list, but I'm not sure it's up to date, so I'll let you take it from there. And then just two other items. I really wanted to say thank you again for spearheading the roundtable with the drugs, no no boundaries conversation. I thought it was a really important move and initial discussion as a community with folks like our sheriff and our guidance counselor and St. Christopher's Inn, the mental health commissioner, Walter Hoving, and our Putnam County DA. I think that was a great panel. It was a strong panel that had lots of good information and experiences and expertise that was really held as a springboard for future conversations. We're looking... we're going to debrief Mike Williams and Mike Selet, who is the facilitator, and talk about what went well, what didn't go well, and some next steps. And we're thinking about possibly having a... planning another conversation more about resources.
Agreed.
What are folks in the community? What's availability? Who's out there? Who can help? Who can provide some resources? And for parents and community members and kids to come in and ask specific questions. So it's sort of in the planning stages, but that's our next... that's our hope for the next move.
Glad to hear we're going to continue on that. That's great.
Yeah, I think it's... And we've also created some really fine, strong partnerships with people in our community, such as the people on the panel. Mike and I... Mike and I both went to Walter Hoving and St. Christopher's Inn. It was the first time that we went there. So we met new people. We found new resources. And I think that's just more community building. So it was a great experience on so many levels for all of us. And lastly, I took part in O'Neill's principal search. I've been part of their search for a number of months. I've been in part of their interviews. And just yesterday, I spent the day with one of their candidates and brought him around to meet with faculty, with students. I saw many of our students there in the focus groups and they were just speaking in such an articulate, smart, engaging, lovely way and they would have been very proud of how they presented themselves. And they also met... he also met with administration and the superintendent. So I was very honored to be asked to be part of that process because it's important that we are a presence in our high schools that we partner with. So I thank them for involving us in the process and our students from Garrison School.
Questions for Laura? John?
Just to follow up on Laura's comments with regards to the ELA. They were administered this past week. This is the first year that there's a change of vendors in terms of who is writing the ELA. Pearson was a longtime contractor for state testing with New York State Department of Education. That... the contract changed a couple of years ago and this is the first year where we are seeing items that are generated by the new testing services, which is called Questar. The reports from teachers and students are that they are greatly improved tests. They're greatly improved in terms of the age appropriateness of the questions, a feeling that the questions have a lot less of a gotcha kind of component to them as has been broadly publicized in years past under the Pearson times. As Laura did say, we did have a 29% opt-out rate here in Garrison. It is not out of line with other schools in this area, somewhere around the median. In terms of ramifications, there are a few conflicting things that I want to make you aware of as a board. Basically, back in 2014, that was back under Commissioner King's time, there was a stipulation that if a district fell below 95% opt-out rates for three consecutive years, that they would be put on a... they would be considered a district in need of assistance and be mandated to put onto an LAP, which is a local assistance plan, until the time that they reached and maintained a 95% participation rate. However, subsequent to that, the federal legislation passed in late 2015, the ESA federal policy forbids the federal government from withholding funding or penalizing in any way states or districts that do not have a 95% participation rate. In addition to that, then, about a year ago, the new commissioner, Mary Ellen Eilia, said that parents absolutely have the right to opt their kids out of state standardized testing and also made the announcement that the New York State Education Department would not withhold funding from school districts as a penalty for low participation rates. These, however, are anecdotal as compared to what is actually was put under regulation by Commissioner King. So there is a discrepancy, basically between, from my understanding and research, between what is formally stated and what has been more informally stated. So we are left to sort of see if there are indeed ramifications for having three consecutive years below the 95% opt-out rate. If there is any kind of stipulation, we will be in very, very good company throughout New York State and I'm sure we'll have a lot of critical friends to commiserate and work with. The math tests are nicely spaced apart this year from the ELAs. They are not being administered until early May. So we have a little bit of a break. There have been times in the past when there was a three-day turnaround and we went right into the next set of testing. That is not the case. We are mandated to do field testing. That will be eighth grade ELA and that will be... We will be field testing computer-based testing. Right now, with the state testing, we have an option of doing paper-based tests or computer-based tests. This will be our second year implementing computer-based tests for our field tests. We are just basically making sure that our network infrastructure is robust enough to handle the testing, that we have time to basically do all the troubleshooting we want to so that we can then make a decision if and when in the future we want to go to computer-based state testing.
John, field test is in addition to...
That's correct.
So our eighth graders will be taking two sets of standardized tests from that?
That's for English.
For English, right?
Yes, so... Yes, so.
I thought we just did ELA.
We did ELA.
And subsequently, we're gonna have a field test in ELA?
And this is something that, New York State basically contracts up with Questar to provide our students, to provide Questar with the option of having our students to help them generate and go through all the metrics to validate questions for future tests.
And how do we get picked?
Everybody gets picked. Everybody gets picked, and basically every school district gets a grade and a test taken.
Those are.
So that's what that is.
On the, our opt-out rate at 29%, that's across, Laura said, opt-out was 29% in six, seven, and eight, and also 29% in three through, three through five. What were the, did we have any particular classes or grades that drove the opt-out rates? That skewed those numbers? Did you have 100% class, for example, that would have?
No, we had, we had a few that stood out as having a much lower rate, but that was namely fourth grade. And actually, there's two sections of sixth grade. One section of sixth grade had a very, very low opt-out rate, but everybody else had, you know, about the same area.
So can you just, for the board and for the community, tell us what happens? How long are these tests now, because they've changed quite a bit? It's, ELA test was three days?
It was three days.
And how long is the sit? How long do they have to sit for each section of the test?
So in the documentation I read, it said average administration time would be approximately three hours. It basically ended up being more like about three periods, so within 120 minutes, within two hours, the school was done.
Okay, so over the course of three days?
So over the course of three days.
So you're talking 40-minute sets, or 45-minute sets?
I would, I would say, I would say it was about six, six total hours of testing, max.
How's that, I'm not following you. Can you repeat? So they test for three days?
Around three periods a day, 40-minute periods, or about 120 minutes.
Oh, so they actually sit at their desks, answering questions for 120 minutes?
Each day?
Tops, tops, yes.
Each day, 120 minutes?
What'd you say, I got Leslie here. What'd you say, average administration time was in sixth grade?
About 70 minutes, I would say.
70 minutes?
A little over an hour a day.
A little over an hour a day.
Okay, that's, all right, that's a little more manageable. Okay, tell me what happens when a student opts out?
They were, they were sent with work out of the classroom to be supervised here in this library space.
What kind of work, really, probably?
That was basically dependent upon the grade level and the teacher, and the responsibility of the student.
But they're not going off and playing games, they're not like?
It was clearly articulated.
They don't get to hang out with the computer during the test?
It was clearly articulated that it was not, playtime was not social time, it was academic time. And I came in here on a regular basis to really make sure that that tone was established and maintained throughout the testing period. We also had, you know, staff members in here sufficiently supervising and making sure there was a productive work going throughout.
You know, I think one of the things that we can communicate to parents is, one, that's a reasonable sit, I think. Maybe more than I'd like, but a reasonable sit. I think the past, it was unreasonable sits, you know, for a student to perform well or to get an effective read on performance. At the same time, you know, we want to emphasize the importance of these exams for, because it is part of public consumption, it's how often other districts perceive us, how homeowners will take a look, it's how people often will examine how well the district is doing, is through data. So it's very important to participate. We also want to emphasize that we have multiple forms of assessment, and that this is not the only assessment tool we have that is, you know, measurable, that we use this data to figure out. But it is important to realize, I think that for parents to realize that, we do respond to data, you know? And the more accurate the data, the more we can determine how to respond to it. We respond to the data that teachers represent, we respond to the data of these tests. We'd like to see, I think we respond, I think, to a constellation of data points, but we do respond. And it's important that, to get a, you know, as great, the greatest participation in these kinds of things as we can, whether it be portfolios, whether it be other systems of measurement, like the, I guess, the Renaissance programming, as well as these state tests. The more participation we get, the more we can determine what the needs are. So I think it's very important for parents and for the community to understand that we value decent data so that we can make decisions about how to fund programming. And that, you know, non-participation, whether it be non-participation in homework assignments, non-participation in projects, non-participation in portfolios, non-participation in exams, affects our ability to determine what is data and what is not data. And that often freezes our ability to make decisions. And we have to rely on anecdote or hearsay, which is not the best way to go about making a decision, about how to fund the school, or how to determine what are the programmatic needs of the institution.
You know, I should add that, you know, alongside, you know, the detriments of a higher opt-out rate is the lack of being able to qualify to be a rewards school here in New York State. And there certainly are many districts here in our BOSI consortium area that are known to be historically reward school, that have been able to maintain a very low opt-out rate, and have been able to effectively establish and communicate an expectation and a culture that has fostered an understanding of what you're saying.
Can you remind the public what a rewards designation gives us materially?
Are your, are you better prepared?
It highlights schools identified as demonstrating high performance or high progress relative to other schools in the state.
But as a high-well school, a high-well district, the actual reward for being a reward school is the honor and the glory.
Yes.
And a certificate.
And a certificate.
Which is important, because there are lots of empty frames, and we like to put certificates in.
But also, schools can't become completely riddled because of this as well. So there are a lot of, there are a lot of things that people are proud of or aspiring for, right?
Anything else, John?
No, that's it.
Any questions for John? If it's not, Sue?
Sue, not John.
The treasurer's report.
The treasurer's report. The February treasurer's report, the first page you see is the investment accounts. We started out with $9,003,69. We had slight investment income of $432.33, and we had expenditures mostly for payroll and warrants of $738, which we ended up the month of at $8,356,727. And on the multi-fund account, we started out with $563,965. Had expenditures of just around, I'm sorry, revenues of $758,000 and expenditures of just under $700,000. So we ended up the month with $735,526,24.
Other than those transfer, no way there's, this is, I have to, before we get to the budget status, revenue status, warrants, Google, by all means.
Sue?
Yes.
There's a huge interest in earnings on investments, $737,000? Am I reading that right? Receipts collected during the month?
On investments, with the multi-fund?
Page two in the general fund, interest and earnings and investment, halfway down.
Oh, no, that's the transfer from the investment account, from the money market account. We transferred, if you look at interest in earnings, $737,000, that's actually coming from our own account. We transferred money.
We all wanted to know what bank it was.
Yeah. No, we, basically every month, we hold money in the money market account, so we get a little bit higher interest rate transferred into the multi-fund account when we're paying bills and paying our employees, just as we're paying them. So there's always a transfer, so that's really.
Because it's usually such little numbers for interest.
Yeah, usually it's about that much of a transfer between our warrants and our payroll. No, I'm not that good at investing. I'm good, but not that good. I was impressed.
If there are no other questions, resolve the Board of Education. Garrison Union Free School District approves the treasurer's report for February 2017 as presented.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, donates, thank you. Sue, budget status, revenue status, warrant reports, and we got a budget transfer coming up too.
I'm gonna say all these reports are business as usual, unless anybody has any specific questions. I would move on to the voter transfer, which is basically to cover BOSI expenses related to special ed students being tested, and there was some extra testing that went on.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, extra testing, is this, if it's extra testing, I assume it wasn't anticipated?
No, it wasn't anticipated, but also, Laura, help me out. Am I saying the right word, with the evaluating, not testing, evaluating some students, some outside evaluations that went on in BOSI's, yep.
Is that the BOSI services?
Yes.
$20,000.
Missing an E, services. Sorry, so that's on here.
All right, any questions about the reason for budget transfer? If not, resolve the Board of Education. Garrison Union Free School District approves budget transfer number six, any amount of $26,500.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions, donates, thank you very much, Sue. We got a consent agenda, let me open it up. Minutes, all right. Never mind, I'll do it old-fashioned way, read it from print. No, no, no. Resolve the Board of Education. Garrison Union Free School District approves a consent agenda as items A, B through G as presented. One, except the minutes of the March 8 and March 22 board meetings, those are in your package. There's CSE recommendations for approval, also in your package. Contracts for Educational Services, I must spell that, services, contracts for Educational Services approve the 2016-17 Contracts for Educational Services with Hendrick Hudson Central School District for two separate students. Item E, approve the 2016-17 Contract for Health and Welfare Services with Lakeland Central School District with three students at a cost of $3,286. The actual contract itself is in your package. Item F, I'm sorry, item F is approve the 2016-17 Contract for Health and Welfare Services for the Arlington Central School District for seven students, for total cost of $4,996.39. That contract is also in your package. Item G, approve the voting machine liability agreement. Putnam County for May 16, 2017, budget and vote election. That contract is in your package, and that's the last of the consent agenda. Give me a second.
Second.
Any questions on that? What's the, the Arlington School District, is that Poughkeepsie Day, or?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have two questions. What is the Arlington School for seven students? It says it's for medical services. What did you, Laura, you explain?
It's for, it pays, if you see, if you look in here, it's for nurses, social workers, speech, school psychologists, and they use their salaries and create a.
I understood, I understood the pooling, but it can't speak Poughkeepsie Day, because it was like thousands of students, except there were several thousand. No, no, seven students.
Seven students.
No, but if you read the sheet, the way they get to $700 per student was some millions of dollars divided by the number of students. Right, I'm trying to say. For our seven students, are they students who need specific speech therapy or something, and the Arlington School District provides it, or what's happening?
Wasn't that the one with the medical, so that if they have to go see the nurse while they're in school?
Sue, I'm sorry, I wanted to.
Yeah, every school that has private schools pretty much does this. They take the cost for their health services, and they divide it by their total number of students. That's why, and that's how they come up with the cost. So every, that's why when you do approve these health services, they're always different for every single school, because everybody has different costs related to their health. But it is, like as Laura said, just to provide health services, most of these private schools don't have nurses or school psychologists.
Sorry, I'm confused. Why are we talking about private? Who are the seven students?
PDS.
Garrison's?
PDS.
Seven?
Yes.
We are, by state law, responsible for providing specific services to our students who are going out of district.
Who go out of district.
The way we do that is that.
So we're recompensing, let's say, PDS for the nursing services of students who go there.
PDS, masters.
Got it, okay.
Catholic school, the whole deal.
And there's some general group, it's obviously very large, because they have $700.
They have 4,000 students.
Not to put too fine a point on this.
We've all did this every year.
What we're doing is we're reimbursing the Arlington Central School District for services. They provide to PDS, so it's almost a pass through.
Now I get it.
So, okay.
The factor is that the number of students in their district.
That's how you know, so Arlington's gigantic.
Yeah, now they're supporting 10,000 students.
Right.
Read the thing.
Two.
Yeah, okay, I have a second question, which is, or more point, I guess, there's not really much to look at it, but the one we breezed over, which is the Contract for Educational Health and Wealth, no. Yeah, the Contract for Educational Services is quite substantial. One of them is $78,000, and one of them is like $120,000. I assume there's not much we can do about it, these are.
Ten hood.
These are, kids need special education for disability, and more just to note that these are material expenses.
Right, and this is why, relatedly, we discussed about.
We talked about.
So. Do I have, did we have a second, and a, so moved in a second?
Yeah, you have.
We did? Okay, all those in favor accepting the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
Extentions, donates, where do we go from here? Oh, we have action, oh yeah, this is what we said we were gonna do. All right, we have one thing to do in the action items. This is pursuant to the discussion we had earlier about the proposed budget, and that is to approve the budget itself. Now, we will subsequently have a public hearing on this budget, in which anybody who wants to come in here, the details of the budget, we will have approved, have an opportunity to do that. But the actual board approval of the budget for the voter approval takes place right now. And that's, the resolution there is, resolve the Board of Education. Garrison Union Free School District adopts the proposed 2017/18 budget for the Garrison Union Free School District in the amount of $10,575,839 to be presented for voter consideration at the annual meeting on May 16, 2017, and the 2017/18 property tax report card as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? We've covered this at some length over multiple meetings, and if there's not, all those in favor?
Aye.
No extentions, no need, well done, thank you all. Now we come to the public comment portion of the meeting. Does anyone have a public comment?
Public.
If there's no public comment, do we have a board member comment? Anybody and everybody?
I, I get, you know, I look forward to the, I'm looking forward to, I'm thinking about next year, and I'm wondering if you had, whether, when the date is where assignments, classroom assignments, role assignments happen, and so that's public, you know, they're wondering what's gonna be happening next year. I'm wondering when all that information goes public, how do we handle that? Has there been preliminary conversations with teachers?
Yes.
And then they get a letter that determines classroom assignments, et cetera?
Right, that's been traditionally in the summer. But we're in a lot of conversation right now, just with staff, and just reconfiguring some things, reimagining some things, and then some will just not change, because they're moving very long. So we don't have a timeline on when that will happen, but as we get closer to it, and as we make more concrete decisions about what that will look like, we'll make sure that we pass that on to the community.
And I wanted to ask another, I wanted to make another comment. I want, you know, we passed this budget, of course, which shapes the revenue and expenses that we are anticipating, but there is flexibility to address specific needs as they arise. And it might be good for everyone to be aware that, you know, we have the ability to.
to transfer funds or make alterations so that we can respond, and I'm thinking of, you know, responding to our, our priorities, and how we go about doing that, and I'm hoping that, you know, as we move through the end of the school year, start moving into the summer, we're also thinking about how we're gonna meet those priorities, and making sure that we have the personnel prepared in the right spot, in the sense that they know where they're going to be, they know the preparation they need to make, so that when we walk in the door September one, planning's already been done, curricula's already been developed, and they're, and, you know, worked out ahead of time, in the, in the sense that we're responding to those needs is firmly set. So, I want to encourage, I want to encourage the board, I want to encourage you, Laura, and everyone else to start looking, hopefully start looking toward that, and being able to articulate where everybody is, where everyone's going to be, so that they can prepare for where they're going to be. And by everybody, I mean teachers, and professionals, et cetera. That's it.
Other board member comment? Anybody, everyone? If not, no, thank you all, and I have one more resolution, and that is that we adjourn the April fifth meeting of the Garrison Union Free School District Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Extentions, donates, well done, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
That's why things have to sign.
All right, log out. Log out.